They gave me this responsibility today because we have a lot of them. So here we go. Christie, you want to come on up? I always like to get you up here first before I read it. All right. This is a certificate of appreciation presented to Christie Cruz on this twentieth day of February twenty twenty four by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of five years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Register of Deeds Office. Congratulations. Dan. All right, Dan Nelson, a certificate of appreciation is presented to Dan Nelson on this twentieth day of February twenty twenty four by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of five years of dedicated and exceptional service in the Brookings County State's Attorney's Office. Thank you. Dan, congratulations. Marty. Maybe you didn't know you were gonna get this today. Okay. Certificate of appreciation presented to Marty Stanwick on this twentieth day of February twenty twenty four by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of twenty-five years of dedicated and exceptional service in the Brookings County Sheriff's Office. Congratulations, Marty. Jacob, is Jacob in here yet? Oh, we're there. Mandy, you're on deck. Jacob, certificate of appreciation is presented to Jacob Bremer on this twentieth day of February twenty twenty four by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of fifteen years, fifteen years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Department of Equalization. Congratulations, Jacob. Mandy. I guess it's the most we've ever given out at one meeting, so. All right, certificate of appreciation presented to Mandy Kramer on this twentieth day of February twenty twenty four by the Brookings County Commission and in recognition of five years of dedicated and exceptional service in the Brookings County State's Attorney's Office. Congratulations, Mandy. Robert Hill. Bob, certificate of appreciation is presented to Robert Hill on this twentieth day of February twenty twenty four by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of twenty-five years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Development Department. Congratulations, Bob. Lisa. Last but not least, huh? All right. Certificate of appreciation presented to Lisa Redkey on this twentieth day of February twenty twenty four by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of five years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Development Department. Congratulations, Bob. Lisa. Last but not least, huh? All right. Certificate of appreciation presented to Lisa Redkey on this twentieth day of February twenty twenty four by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of five years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County State's Attorney's Office. Congratulations. And I'd like to thank you to all you guys. Moving on to item number six, consent agenda items, which includes minutes, travel education, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, and human services report. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
A motion of second. Any comments? Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, call the roll.
Vanderwal, Bartley, Hostler, Krogman, Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number seven, routine business, approval of the claims. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any comments? Additions, corrections? Hearing none, call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B on routine of business, department head reports. Brian, would you like to start?
Aside from the little bit of snow we got last week, we've been continuing to crack seal our chip seal projects coming up. As a reminder to everybody, we got bid openings tomorrow in room two twenty-one. Spies materials and two thousand and twenty-four asphalt project and bid opening at two again next week on the twenty-eighth for our two thousand and twenty-four chip seal project. And then the bids will be considered on the March fifth meeting by the Brookings County Commission for award. Aside from that, I don't have a whole lot.
Any questions? None? Thank you. Thanks. Marty? Jacob?
Just have a couple of dates here. The assessment notices for the two thousand and twenty-four values went out in the mail. People are starting to get those last week Friday, and on Saturday we got several phone calls that we're following up on this morning. We'll be present at the township meeting out at the Outdoor Adventure Center on February twenty-ninth in conjunction with the weed and pest meeting to do a little presentation on the assessment process for the boards. Thursday, March fourteenth is the deadline for appeal to the local board of equalization. Appeals must be done in writing to either your local board clerk or to our office. The local board will then meet on March eighteenth, Monday. The appeal deadline for the county board of equalization is Thursday, April second, and the county board will meet on Tuesday, April ninth in this building. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to let you know, there was no county development department twenty-five years ago. Last, uh, two weeks ago, Tuesday, I went on the radio to discuss emergency management topics. The planning commission that evening on February sixth approved the final draft of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. We're in the process now of giving public notice to get it to the county commission for you to take a look at it and give us your thoughts on it. February seventh, we participated in a South Dakota emergency management quarterly communications drill. February eighth to fourteen, I attended the NACO legislative conference in Washington, DC. Part of that was an all-day intergovernmental roundtable on disaster resilience and, um, got, got some good information out of that. Over the weekend, I had the Brookings home show. The, uh, we had a booth set up to discuss mainly emergency management topics. There was a little bit of planning and zoning discussed, and I was promoting the pre-disaster mitigation plan. February twenty-ninth, the township meeting coming up, we will, we've invited the first planning district down to take care of our county development, fifteen-minute talk, to talk about the pre-disaster mitigation plan and how important it is for the townships to be involved in that. And I have to step out before we get to the strategic plan and the discussion on drainage and the, the strategic plan. The, the big issue with drainage is the state of South Dakota enabling laws on drainage is just so vague. We, we, right now, we're in a, you know, we, we canceled our drainage ordinance, so there's really not a lot going as far as making plans and ordinances on the drainage side. This is my, my thoughts. Any questions? Have a great day. Thank you.
Dustin. Okay. Move on to finance officers' report. I guess Lori handed out a sheet here. Also, be it noted items, auditor's count with the treasure, payroll and additive totals, highway expenditure report, register, register of deeds statement of fees collected. I didn't see you sitting over there, sorry.
I'm hiding today. In addition to that, I just needed to. There's a notice of public sale out. Um, we have three vehicles from the sheriff's office that are going on sale on March fourth, and that sale lasts ten days. It is a two thousand and sixteen Dodge Charger, a two thousand and fifteen Dodge, Dodge Charger, and a two thousand and seventeen Ford Explorer. So those are on the publicsurplus.com website. Otherwise, just wanted to remind, um, anybody sixty-five years or older or disabled that the freeze on assessment for disabled and senior citizens, the deadline is April first, and they can contact our office for, um, the guidelines on that. Single-member household income is forty thousand two ninety, and multi-member households is fifty-one thousand eight oh one. Um, but they can sure call our office, and we can give them more information on that. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions, Lori? So we'll move on to, uh, regular business. First reading, ordinance twenty-four dash zero one, an ordinance providing for the amendment of ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero three. Action of the first reading title only. Which would be an ordinance providing for the amendment of ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero three. What else do I need here?
Note the date and time of the second reading coming up, March nineteenth. It'll be at nine o'clock.
Okay. Noticing the action, first reading title only, uh, the date and time of the second reading will be March nineteenth at nine AM. Move on to item B. Action approved resolution number twenty-four dash zero nine, a resolution establishing the project certifying officer for the community development block grant for Brookings behavioral health and wellness. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move.
Have a motion of second. Any comments?
We have to do this, um, change in chair from last year to this year, so now this will allow, um, Commissioner Jensen to be that signing authority for anything that the county needs to do. Brookings Behavioral Health will also have some, um, I believe their board president will be their signing authority moving forward with this grant.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approved agreement number twenty-four dash thirteen, a county striping contract between Brookings County and Dakota Traffic Services LLC. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any comments?
As you guys may recall, we are working collaboratively, uh, as the southeast South Dakota, uh, county striping project, um, which includes quite a few of the counties, uh, on the southeast side of the state. Bon Home, Brookings, uh, Charles Mix, Clay, Douglas, Lake, Lincoln, McCook, Minnehaha, Moody, Turner, Union, and Yankton. There's a bid tab that was included. Uh, looks like our price and in the contract, which I did have the state's attorney's office review, our price for this year would be one hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Which is going to encompass the entire west side of the county. We had the east side striped last year. The stripes will be applied on the west side of the county. So the retrace, and this will also include our new chip seal.
With this new contract, was that budgeted in then also?
Yeah.
What type of paint are they using? Using the water-based paint or?
We went with the, in the previous years, we've used the high build, um, which was specked by the state, which is quite a bit more expensive. And I opted to go with the waterborne based, which is quite a bit cheaper. I don't know if there's any difference from what I've noticed out there from a lot of our temporary projects that we do have done. It looks like it holds up just as long. But like I said, it's, it's quite a bit cheaper. Uh, the high build, uh, maybe is a little bit more reflective after two, three years, but, uh, we've, I haven't really seen much difference.
Don't they typically use the high build when they grow out the lines or write the lines?
There, there is routing, uh, projects that are available on sort of, on some of our, um, higher volume traffic roads that in the future now, uh, I'm gonna be looking at bringing to you guys because, uh, counties are starting to opt to, to do our striping ourselves. And there's a program out there for higher, higher volume roads that we can get the, the pavement markings ground into our pavement, uh, and I'll be looking at that in the future, just because of the changes the state's brought.
Any further questions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, action approved agreement number twenty-four dash fourteen, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Lake Sinai Township. Project W zero three three six zero five. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any comments?
Uh, this project will be some overhead, uh, electric installation, uh, just off Highway eighty-one along our county road twelve. Pretty straightforward project. It's just continuing on from what they were doing last year, west of Sinai.
Okay. Any questions, Brian? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item E, action approved agreement number twenty-four dash fifteen, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Lake Sinai Township. Project W zero three four three zero four. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Comments?
Uh, with a lot of these projects, if you guys recall, we are going, uh, to the Farm Place Services, uh, after the overhead installation, they're going from overhead line to underground. So be in, in the same area.
Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item F, action approved agreement number twenty-four dash sixteen, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Lake Sinai Township. Three four three zero five. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Have a motion of second. Comments?
Same.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item G, action approved agreement number twenty-four dash seventeen, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Sioux Valley Energy and Sterling Township. Project W zero three four two six six. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move.
Have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item number H, action approved agreement number twenty-four dash eighteen, agreement for detention services between Minnehaha County Lutheran Social Services of South Dakota and Brookings County. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Comments?
This is just our annual contract or agreement with, um, JDC down in Sioux Falls. The rates are there in the letter four fifty-eight forty-eight at JDC. It's a daily rate, um, at LSS two eighty-nine twenty per day.
Danny, have any input here?
So I've been talking with the jail, Dave, and we're kind of shopping around for different JDCs on the east side of the state. We recently utilized Roberts County, and Roberts County is half of what you see here on this number. Uh, they're charging, I think, just over two hundred dollars a day. So I wouldn't sign anything relating to Minnehaha County, um, because I don't want to get locked into these high prices. Um, and with Roberts County offering something that's less, um, as well as... There was one other option. I can't think of it off the top of my head, but, um, it's just too much money, I think, for Minnehaha County, especially when we can utilize Roberts County. So, um, I wouldn't sign anything relating to this, uh, my opinion.
Question, Krogman?
Right. I just, I, I know they, Stacy, I think they, didn't they want us to lock in some type of like retainer fee or anything like that? Okay. Maybe last year.
They're, they built, built, building a new facility.
Yeah.
And stuff, and, and originally we had an agreement, and they wanted us to pay for that, and we said no.
Right.
We're opting out, and so now the cost obviously is quite a bit higher than it used to be. But I was just wondering, would it make sense in case of an emergency type of situation that, I don't know if Roberts County will ever be full or anything like that, we're short of a place to need for a longer term?
Yeah, I agree with you. I, you know, I, not to get into a lot with Roberts County, but we had to do a lot of talking to get in too, so I don't want to be, I don't think the county wants to be left out with no place to go. If we're just signing, I think we need to have the contract as long as there's no money that.
Yeah, I just don't want us to get in a situation where, you know, six, eight months down the road, you guys start seeing JDC costs astronomically increase and come back and ask what the heck's going on. Well, it's five hundred dollars a day. So, um, I think the discussion, at least as far as I'm concerned, is, you know, either we shift away from the conversation with Minnehaha and start pursuing other placements for these juveniles. Or we just can continue to work with Minnehaha County, and you're gonna see those costs get back to what we, you know, we're paying five, six years ago, tens of thousands of dollars. And I, and I'm afraid if we, we sign this, you know, are we gonna start getting more comfortable and is it gonna be more convenient just to send kids down to JDC, um, in, in Minnehaha County? So that's just my concern, but if the commission, you know, it wants to go down this road, uh, you, you just gotta go down this road knowing that, you know, there's gonna be a lot of money potentially at stake here, so.
Has, uh, Roberts County indicated they go into a contract with us?
We can explore that. I guess I haven't talked to Dave or Marty specifically about that, but, um, I think that's where the conversation should go. Because when you're talking about, um, you know, five hundred dollars a day compared to two hundred, um, that adds up over the course of time, especially in a year. So why don't we, why don't we try to explore that if Marty and Dave are open to that?
Well, I got a contract with them now to May.
Okay.
However, I want to remind the commission is, just because they're in Roberts County or whatever, it's just like inmates of mine. I'm responsible for that inmate in Roberts County. So if Roberts County does not do a good job of maintaining their facility and something happens there, we're on the hook for that too. So that's one of the things we got to look at is, is, is the facility itself. Do we want to send inmates to Roberts County?
Remind me a little bit of juveniles again here. Um, in our facility, we can only hold them for a certain amount of time, like.
Right, it's only, we only, we're only authorized for four hours. Right. It's only, we only, we're only authorized for four hours. I wanna get into that forty-eight hours, but not long-term cause I don't have that kinda space, but I do wanna get certified for forty-eight hours.
So we're, we're four hours and then forty-eight. So after we have a juvenile and, and it's getting to the forty, when we get approved for forty-eight, we're getting past that forty. We have no choice but to send them somewhere else, correct?
That's correct.
And that would either be Minnehaha or Roberts as of right now.
And even the four hours is to line up a place for them to go, basically. A place to go and transportation.
And again, I think my, my, I certainly understand your point there because I remember the days when we had ten thousand dollars worth of juvenile cost to Minnehaha County for, and it was kinda rare. We had two juveniles that had terrible crimes they needed to, to stay there and, uh, it cost us quite a bit of money. It cost taxpayers quite a bit of money. However, I just don't wanna put us into a position where we don't have a spot and now we're not, we're not following the rules set for juveniles.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not suggesting that we get into that. I'm just using today as an opportunity to have a, a larger discussion about sort of the path we wanna choose as a county. Because I think this plays into a larger discussion about what we're gonna do into the future. Um, and if we always have Minnehaha County on the, kind of the back burner, I just don't think we as a county are ever gonna really escape sort of these, these high costs associated with that. I, I think maybe this is an opportunity to sort of like forge a path outside of using Minnehaha County. Because, I mean, for example, we had two juveniles recently that, you know, went up to Roberts County for, um, I think it was like three days, three or four days. And then, you know, had they been at, you know, Minnehaha, that would have been over twice the dollar amounts, you know, and, and if that continues to repeat itself, I don't want you to ask me at the time of budget in June, you know, what the heck's going on. You know, so I just, commissioners just should be cognizant of that. Um, and I think, you know, if you guys wanna sign this and have it on the back burner, that's fine. But, you know, just know that this is gonna be an ongoing, ongoing question and issue as we move forward. So.
Just, just a quick question on the Roberts County agreement. We have no agreement, but they've been able to take juveniles if we send them or call them?
Yeah, I think Marty said they have an agreement through May. Um, and as long as there's available space up there, I, I, I suspect they'll take them. So.
Is that agreement then sheriff, uh, similar to this agreement other than the dollar amount?
No, it's half. It's like two hundred.
Other than the half, other than the dollar amount, the terms of the agreement are similar as far as.
Yes.
If I'm only gonna make one comment, I wouldn't take my juvenile to Roberts County. I'm sorry.
Is the, uh, facility of Minnehaha County, is that complete? The one that we, uh, uh, opted not to, to help fund? Not sure. So they're still using their current facility? As far as we know, they're still using their current facility, but they've raised their rates. Would that be a fair assessment? Until they get to New Haven?
It's just tough with other counties. I've checked with Huron and everybody, everybody's full or just taking their own juveniles. So I just don't, I need, we have to have a backup of some sort.
I agree. We could go to predict them at the Roberts County won't take them. We need to, we need to be able to take them elsewhere. As long as we're not bound to Minnehaha County taking them on there, I think it's, it's an option anyway.
This agreement here doesn't guarantee any number of days per calendar year.
Oh.
We're not on the hook for X days, even if we have zero there. So it's open-ended.
Now, if we don't do this agreement, um, is the, is there a, uh, something written in there that there might be a daily? Is the daily outside of that agreement more than this four hundred and change? Or can we even, if we don't do this, can we even take somebody down south?
If, it should be on, I just need to talk. Um, if we don't sign this, is there, and, and we need, uh, need housing, does it just lock in the dollar amount and spots for us or, if we don't sign this, is the dollar amount more because of convenience or?
It could be that or they just won't take them.
They just won't take them.
No, if there's no money involved, I don't know why we're doing this. I signed with Minnehaha County. I'm sorry. I signed with Minnehaha County Jail. I don't intend to use Minnehaha County cause we have our own space, but it is a backup if I get an inmate that I need to move for some reason. I mean, I, I know it's expensive, but you gotta look at the facilities too, okay? And I did have a complaint about Roberts County with one of the juvenile parents and, and I didn't realize this was always coming today or I would have maybe visited, I, cause Dan don't know about those. So, um.
So this just locks in a spot that we don't have to use, but it's a backup in case we need it.
Well, that's, that's what I'm looking at this, at just looking at it right now. As long as we don't, you know, we used to be on, we used to have to give Sioux Falls, uh, money every year for, for brick and mortar, twenty-two thousand every year. That was always supposed to guarantee us a space if we needed it. That always didn't guarantee us, but we had to pay that upfront. And as long as we're not paying anything upfront, you know, there's, it's a lot of responsibility with juveniles. You know, high, high suicide rate. You gotta, you know, if the, if, uh, they're, for a longer term, you gotta make sure that their education, you know, and all that is continued, uh, while they're, while they're incarcerated too. So, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of things that, that go with juvenile. Putting juveniles in jail or JDCs.
This just guarantees a spot while we, uh, check other options and other avenues, right?
Well, that's my, that's what my take is.
Okay.
Where's the, where is the decision made to send a juvenile? Who makes that decision? Dan or?
Dan and the judge.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, obviously on these last two that we sent to Roberts County, that was a decision that, um, you know, I had made to try to save the county money. I mean, that's the reason these decisions are being made. Um, and then in coordination with Dave on the transports, you know, and, and which facility we're, we're utilizing. Um, and Marty's right. I mean, there's not, there's not a lot of available JDCs on the east side of the state uh, that are even willing to take juveniles anymore. Um, Minnehaha really has the market cornered on this thing and they know it. And that's why they're able to charge these prices because they got the leverage to do it. And with Roberts County being, you know, half the price, you know, that's, that's the reason that decision was made. I mean, and I know you guys probably even want us to utilize something that's gonna cost the county money or less money, but, um, you know, ultimately that's, that's the decision that, you know, Marty's gonna have to make on where these juveniles are going. Um, I can make recommendations or requests, but just that, the, the feedback from the commission, I think, would be helpful in terms of what direction we wanna go, you know? Cause I, in years past, you know, the, I guess the, the feedback I was getting from the commission is to try to, you know, find a, an option that was gonna cost less money. Um, but.
But we also need to take in account safety of the incarcerated.
Yeah, I mean, if, I'm not, I don't wanna send juveniles to a, a jail that's not gonna comply with safety standards. And I don't ever wanna suggest that I would. Um, and I don't, I don't, if Roberts County isn't complying with safety, I mean, that's a whole separate conversation.
It's another conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think at this point, we sign this particular agreement because it holds us to nothing other than the price. And, uh, that gives us another tool in the toolbox, so to speak. And Roberts County is another, another one. And if I have a, a juvenile that I think is going to be short-term but needs Sioux Falls maybe okay, but if they're gonna be a long-term because of trial, whatever, maybe Roberts County is financially a better decision for us depending on the juvenile. I think a lot of it depends on the juvenile themselves and their personality and what's going on with them. Whether we choose one facility or the other, not necessarily just because of cost. Uh, but obviously we look at costs too. But I think we sign this agreement. Uh, we look at an extension for Roberts County on their agreement and we'll, we'll try and mold the two together. Uh, you guys are gonna have to decide which facility works best for each individual child.
Okay.
Just.
Does Huron, you said Huron has a facility, but they're full?
Yeah, they, when I talked to Huron, they said they just, they only have eight beds and they were just gonna limit to their own. Watertown is, you know, everybody's, everybody's full. I, it, I didn't talk to Watertown, but I believe, uh, Dave Beitler talked to Watertown and Aberdeen when we were looking for space.
So as of right now, it's closed, but potentially if spaces open up other places, that's a possibility. Is, is there anything over in Minnesota?
We haven't checked any place in Minnesota. That, that's a possibility. If, if the court is okay, but that.
Yeah, I, I think Dave mentioned that, uh, they, they, they kinda looked preliminarily. I think him and Cody did, but nothing was available. I think it was the Twin Cities was the only thing, which I don't think we wanna venture over there, but wow, probably.
We'll work on this a little harder to, to, to
Yeah.
see what we can find out from other, other.
No, it's a good.
Space may open up.
Yeah, it's a good conversation to have because it's gonna, um, it's gonna be important, I think, for the county because of how much money is involved. Uh, so I appreciate Marty's openness to exploring this and see what we can come up with. So.
Okay. Mike, did I answer? You, you were, you were asking me a question. I don't even know if I answered it when you were.
Well, I don't think it was a question as much as it was a statement.
Oh, okay. Okay.
End of comments. Uh, call a roll please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, we do have a nine o'clock scheduled. Sorry, we took a little extra time on that. Uh, we have a scheduled Banner Associates, uh, update on Aurora and White upcoming utility projects. You come forward.
Morning, everyone. Scott Letty with Banner Associates. Well, I'm here to talk about the Aurora project. Uh, Cedric is also here from our office. He'll be, uh, talking about the, permit for White. So, uh, met with Brian back in our last fall, I'll say in October, November, and then here, uh, this past month. Um, and regarding the, the work that's gonna be happening in, uh, in Aurora this summer, um, scheduled to start this spring. We haven't started bidding yet. The project is under review right now by the state. But I don't know if you can move to the third page there, if you would please. Shows the phasing plan. Phase three and four is the work in the county, uh, right-of-way, um, needing a permit. Like I said, talked with Brian and folks in the office on best scenario to, for that work to be completed, um, as quickly and as safely as possible. And we ended up ultimately going with a full closure of Broadway and have a limit of forty-five days on that work to happen. But as you'll see, there's work on Redmond that has to occur before that. Um, it's sanitary sewer replacement only. There's no, there's a small amount of water, um, but it's only, uh, sanitary sewer. So the, the pipe itself, um, and the manholes, which will hopefully start this spring.
Which end are you starting on?
Uh, sorry. Yeah. Thanks, Ryan. On, on the west end there. Uh, the phase one, it's actually, we finished a project with a new lift station just to the south of that spot there. But, uh, problem with, uh, Redmond is, uh, that development to the south only has, uh, exit and entrance there off of Redmond. So we've gotta phase that so they can still, get in and out of their, um, homes. And, uh, then like I said, that would get, um, brought back up with gravel, temporary surfaced, and then they would begin the work on uh, the intersection there at Redmond and Broadway. And, uh, the work there includes sewer that will eventually go further to the east there on Railroad Street. That's just a gravel, uh, street that goes back just to the one private residence there. And then, um, we're also boring underneath the, the railroad with a new sanitary sewer that will, um, there's issues with it now. It holds solids and, uh, it's just not functioning well. Um, we're also deepening the sewer. Biggest problem in Aurora is it's flat. And not only the land, but the sewers were laid too, um, too flat for, um, them to work properly. So this really is going to, um, set them up for future as they replace, um, more and more sewer to the north. Everything can be, um, put in deeper and at the appropriate grades. But with that closure, um, the detour, as you'll see on the following pages, um, would be over to I twenty-nine.
What are we looking at? I mean, obviously that phase four, which is Broadway, is gonna be, the main traffic area for not necessarily just residents, but, you know, grain, all that type of stuff. What kinda date projection are you looking at on phase four to, to close that down?
You know, by, if they start in May, um, by, uh, June, they would be there.
Pre, pre-harvest type.
Yeah, exactly. And then just had the forty-five day stipulation on there that, and, um, how, how will hold that to them? Because days are always can be difficult or a contractor can, but, um, we're gonna limit their work moving east until that work is done on Broadway. So it gives them the incentive to, um, not only get the, um, boring contractor in there to bore underneath, um, the railroad, um, and lay the sewer in, but to get the surfacing put back down.
So the, the forty-five days on Broadway there, they would have the sur, you just said the surface would be back to original?
Correct. Yep. There's two fourteen-foot lanes, uh, eight-inch concrete. And then there's a asphalt shoulder.
What, what type of, of, uh, roads will you use for detours during the Broadway project? Is there any detour routes around it?
Yeah, the only, the, the one that we, within it, and it shows up on that next page is over to I twenty-nine. So it'll be signed on, uh, highway fourteen and then, uh, Elkton Road as well to the south.
One question I have with, with phase three and phase four, will they be done together?
Concurrently, yes.
So the forty-five days won't be forty-five or three?
Good question. No. You're right, Kelly. Yeah. They're, they'd be done concurrently. Yeah. We give, trying to give the contractor a little bit of flexibility. And again, um, you know, they always come in with some, some different ideas too, but that's how it's currently set up. But the, the one lane will be left open. The, uh, the northbound lane. And when I say that, um, for emergency vehicles only. So that they will be able to get there at, at all times. All the work is, is taking place on the west side. We're actually moving the sewer. Those manholes sit right now in the wheel path of those trucks and actually those, those manholes are not holding up. So we're moving it, uh, actually onto the shoulder. On that asphalt shoulder is where the manholes will be. So away from traffic. But then it also allows that one lane to be left with, with concrete. But there'll be barricades, of course, but if fire trucks need to get through, they can be slid aside or, or run over for that matter if there's, uh, quite the emergency.
Any other questions?
As communication, I mean, it's not been official, but is communication taking place to like Valero and, and Eggworks as well, so?
Right, yep. We've talked to them and then as, as contractor selected, then, right, there'd be additional, you know, emergency services, um, those businesses, a grain elevator, we've met with them. School buses, um, mail, all would be kind of taken care of.
As soon as Redmond Road and that's all completed, then it will be asphalted also?
Yes.
They won't wait till the whole sewer project is?
Correct, right. But we'll wait, it'll be that, the, the red section will be just with, with gravel and then they'll pave everything, both phase one and two together.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yep.
Do I do that one now? After the presentation, we have an action to approve agreement number twenty-four dash ten, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by the City of Aurora. Have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried. Item two is action approve agreement number twenty-four dash one-one, an application for occupancy of right-of-way county highway made by City of White. Motion approve. Well. Okay, the presentation.
I'm Cedric K. with Banner Associates. Um, the, the first one here is for the intersection of County Highway twenty-five and Second Street in White. On the second page, currently, so the work would take place in that intersection in twenty-twenty-four. Uh, that, the work that would take place in that intersection would be new water main installation, new sanitary sewer installation, and then the replacement of the existing culverts in the county right-of-way. The, the proposed roadway section that would go back in would match the existing asphalt section, which is a six-inch asphalt section. It'll also include ten inches of base course and twelve inches of oversized rock. The, the detour for both, both phases is the same. We would detour the traffic off of, uh, south, the state Highway thirty over to I twenty-nine and north up to Highway twenty-eight back over to Toronto.
So phase one is the orange, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and so we're going to be looking at right there that cross where North Hooker Avenue is, is that?
Correct.
We're looking at there?
Yep.
And then also between East Fourth Street, those two spots are what we're?
Correct, yep. That would be both of the, the permits that were submitted. We're for both those intersections, yep.
Both, both those to be done at the same time?
Uh, they'll be done in the same construction season. I, I'm not sure, uh, if, if the contractor has the resources, then, then yes, both streets could be started at the same time. But the, the construction would be completed in both intersections in twenty-four. And there is, uh, from the time they open the intersection, or from the time they close the intersection, it would be a forty-five day working period that they would have to have that intersection reopened.
Potentially two forty-five day.
Potentially, yep.
Why so long for an intersection?
We were thinking that, so on Second Street, they have to start at the intersection of Second and Lincoln with the sanitary sewer. Uh, they'll work their way to the east and by the time they get through that intersection, uh, in order to get the surfacing back on, they're probably going to have to get majority of Second Street ready before they, they come back in and pave.
Is there any chance for temporary? I mean,
Yes.
gravel overlay that could open it up?
Yep.
And then at least open it up for a certain amount of time to finish East Second Street. It will allow people to travel through, but not obviously on a paved until the whole thing is paved?
Yeah, yep. I think, you know, we, that's typically what we've done in the past on the intersections is try to get them temp-surfaced so they can be utilized. And then when they come back in to, to pave the asphalt, then we would close that intersection down and allow the asphalt contractor to get it paved.
Cause basically the detour is for truck traffic, correct?
Correct, yep.
So any, any pedestrian traffic within town, they'll be able to reroute around town to get where they need to?
Correct, yep. Yeah, the detour would be for any, uh, agricultural truck traffic or any other truck traffic that typically uses that county road.
Any other questions? Brian, do you have any other questions?
I guess my only comment is that we did work to make sure that all this work was done in one construction season. The original proposal, which I guess I didn't like to see was that it would have to be spread out within two construction seasons. So I, I know that there's a extension, but I guess I'd rather have to deal with it one year than compared to two. And they, they did accommodate. Anything else? Okay. Back to, uh, thank you for your presentation. Action approve agreement number twenty-four dash one-one, an application for occupancy right-of-way county highways made by City of White. I have motion approve.
Move approval, second.
Have motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried. Item three is an action approve agreement number twenty-four, for occupancy right-of-way of county highways made by City of White. I have motion approve.
Move, second.
Have motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to regular business. Item I is action approve agreement number twenty-four dash one-nine, a Brookings County Detention Center inmate housing contract with Hamlin County. I have motion approve.
Move, second.
Have motion and a second. Comments, Marty?
No, this is a new county coming aboard. Watertown is, uh, is, is getting fuller and, and so he's thinking about, uh, wanting to come, well, he obviously wants to come to Brookings.
Has our numbers with Marshall Service, uh, remain the same?
Yeah, yeah, well, uh, we contracted for ten, but I have thirteen, and I said we could go up to fifteen, but we, we still are, we still have lots of space left, so. I don't see that Hamlin County will bring us a lot of inmates, so we can accommodate that.
Okay. Any further questions? Hearing none, call or roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Progman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item J, action approve the application for a shooting range grant through the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks for the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. I have motion approve.
Move, second.
I have motion and a second. Comments?
Uh, this is for, uh, new car, card readers on the two new offices that we put in, and then every year I'm going to try to get the, the dynamic filters covered. Uh, seventy-five, twenty-five, uh, cost share, and then they, uh, if we are awarded this, we find out in September.
Okay. Any questions for Dustin?
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried. Item K, action approve all bids as presented for the twenty-twenty-four weed chemicals. I have motion approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any comments?
One item to note, um, Misty is gone this week, but at a conference, but, um, this, the two-four D, I mean, this should actually be container, not tow, two-point-five gallons per container.
Okay.
Just a correction there.
That correction?
So we're approving all, all of them?
Correct.
In case we need to buy from them, we have a price set in and we can get it.
Right, yep.
Based kind of on availability of? Any further questions? Call or roll, please.
Progman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item L, action approve a request to fill vacancy for four temporary election workers in the finance office. I have motion approve.
So moved, second.
Have motion and a second. Any comments?
Um, these are for the workers that are on first floor in the hallway helping absentee voters during the pro, absentee process. Um, also working in the conference room next door, keeping everything, um, orderly and, um, that kind of thing. We did budget for it. It is an increase in one person from previous years. It seemed like every year we had, uh, harder times staffing, and so this will help alleviate that.
Yeah. So it's not necessarily four more people, it's just?
Just four.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Call, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried. Item N, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for an equipment operator in the highway department. I have motion approve.
Move approval.
I have motion and a second. Any comments?
This position, oh, sorry, this position is open due to an internal promotion.
No further comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried. Item N, action approve request to fill vacancy for a heavy equipment operator in the highway department. I have motion approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any comments?
This position is open due to a resignation.
Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried. Item O, action approve request to fill vacancy for an equipment mechanic in the highway department. I have motion approve.
Move approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Again, this is due to a resignation. Also, um, Brian took some time and looked at this position, made a few changes to the job description before we go ahead and post again.
Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried. Item P, action declare items as surplus property to be sold via online auction or disposed of. I have motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried. Item ten, Commission Department Director Report.
We have the January Veteran Service Officer numbers there for this year. A hundred and thirty-three, um, appointments for veterans assisted. Eleven DAV van rides and five outreach. Included in your packet was the, kind of the, the analysis for surplus cash in the general fund, uh, January twenty-four percent. Um, that's just, uh, higher than the ten-year average of about two, twenty-two percent, of course, very early in the year, um, but we'll be, obviously, we keep that, keep a watch on that throughout the year. The next Sioux Valley Commissioners Association or Ten County meeting is coming up on Wednesday, March thirteenth. I do need to, um, RSVP for that, so if you know, you're yes, 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 okay, that's easy. Um, and then Dwayne Chapel with the Research Park sent this out, um, just giving some updates. You can take some time and read through his, um, updates that are happenings at the, the Research Park out there. He did say that, uh, he plans to submit these reports every four to six weeks now throughout the year, so you'll be seeing these a little bit more often. But that is included with my staff report, so you can take a look at that. Um, there is also, uh, some other just information in there. I guess the thing I wanted to get to is the strategic plan. So at our last Department Head meeting, we did sit down and kind of review, paged through this with all of the department heads. Just some things to note that I highlighted, um, a couple of the first goals, objectives. Basically, talk about a capital improvement plan, a CIP plan. We really don't have one any, have one internal that can really come up with a true CIP plan. So I know several years ago, we looked at hiring that done. I guess maybe at budget time for twenty-twenty-five, I may be asking for, you know, something like that to be budgeted in twenty-twenty-five to look at maybe hiring that done, so we have a true capital improvement plan. I think that would help all departments in budgeting, uh, moving forward. So that was just something that we took a note of. I think Bob had mentioned a couple of things before he left. The local emergency operations plan currently being revised this year is along, along with the pre-disaster, pre-disaster mitigation plan being reviewed this year. Implementing the twenty-sixteen County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, that was complete. I don't know if that's an objective we want to keep on there, um, now that it's complete, but, um, develop and implement ordinances that reflect, reflect that plan. And again, as Bob had mentioned, that the, the ordinances are, um, currently being updated. We had that first reading here this morning. Um, the second reading will be at the second meeting in March. And then objective number three, as Bob again had mentioned, the Drainage Master Plan, he is requesting that we delete this objective because of the, the statutes that, um, are vague. Other than that, we did add an objective in here for transparency about all of the different departments that provide annual reports to the commission. This pretty, this is happening now, essentially. Um, Register of Deeds, well, you'll be seeing that. Soon equalization, you always get that at the equalization boards in April. Bob always provides you a plan. Um, Misty does as well. Uh, Dustin's very good about bringing numbers, so we, since it's being done, we wanted to add that as an objective. And then this work plan, we have that kind of at, that I take care of and then, you know, we, I bring that to the commission every so often and we take a look at that work plan. It really encompasses all of the different departments. I think the way it was written previously was that each department would develop a work plan, which they do, and they present sort of at budget time. But I think this is a little bit more clear instead of them presenting that to you, um, every single, you know, as often as I do, I think we can incorporate the work plan that I have created and continue to update as that. So those are the changes that, um, that were discussed by the department heads. I don't know if you have had a chance to look this over and if you're okay with those changes. I don't need action or anything, just kind of a consensus to move forward with those changes or, or if any questions or, or anything of that nature.
I brought up transparent, in transparency in government. Can you page up a little bit?
In?
Right here. You have objective two, the Register of Deeds, Equalization Commission, County Development, Weed and Pass, and then Outdoor Adventure Center, Center will provide annual reports.
Yeah, so
There's
the other ones that do provide reports are noted earlier in the plan, under, basically under safety, I think it's a
No, it's
Um, here, sheriff, state's attorney, sheriff detention center are all there. They were up under the public safety portion of the strategic plan, so I didn't put them down with the other ones, because they were already listed out.
Yep. One of our higher budgeted departments is not included there. Is there a reason for that? Highway department is not included.
Oh, I could put, did I miss highway? And I can, I, we can add that. That's not an issue.
In this, this, I mean, we used to have report from the highway registered deeds, all the departments gave a report. Is, which is the right area in 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 this area to put the highway or in the?
I think it's the transparency, because the other one speaks to public safety specifically.
Okay. So if you add it to there, then?
Yep.
Any other comments? You guys read through that?
Okay. All right. Then the only other thing that I have is just the upcoming dates. The pipeline training, for those of you, I think I've registered, some of you have registered. I think I registered a couple of you as well. That is next Wednesday, out at the Dakota Bank Center at eleven-thirty. We do have that annual township meeting and the weed board meeting, starts at ten, with the township meeting and then lunch, and then one o'clock is the weed meeting. And that's out at the BCOAC next Thursday, the twenty-ninth. As I had already mentioned, Wednesday, the thirteenth of March is that Ten County meeting. It is in Huron. Beetle County is hosting, that starts at noon. Then looking a little bit further out, at the end of March, we do have a Good Friday holiday where offices will close at noon on March twenty-ninth. That's all I have.
Item number eleven, State's Attorney's Office Report.
And speaking to that strategic plan, I'll plan to give my annual report next week, and we'll go over conviction, stats, and compare it to the last five years, so I'll wait to give that next week.
Thank you. Commissioner Reports and Discussions. Commissioner Vanderwall?
Thank you. On February sixth, that evening, I attended the zoning meeting here on the fifteenth, attended the Joint Powers Board. And then on the seventeenth, on Saturday, I attended the Cracker Barrel here in this very room. That's my report. Thank you.
Mr. Bartley?
Okay, on the fifth, we had another board meeting and a building committee meeting for Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness. Moving along with the building plans, we have a a fifty-day period. Our application, and it's, it's in your office, Stacy? Behavioral Health, environmental study?
It is in my office, yes.
The environmental study?
The hard copy.
Public questions or comments, there, it's available in Stacy's office. After fifteen days, it goes back to the state for an additional fifteen days, and after that, to the governor's signature. At that point, we can start a project. The sixth was a planning and zoning meeting. You'll see some things on future agendas. The seventh was the first district call-in. It was, it was a board meeting on the, and it was a team meeting. Also had a meeting for behavioral health, and a Zoom meeting. And the sixteenth, the BDC meeting was well-attended. Plans are being made for the future and how the organization will work, and everything looks good, and that's my report.
Mr. Krugman?
Pretty light for me. Second half of of the month, so the next couple of weeks I'll be busy, but I didn't have anything the last two weeks.
Mr. Hostler?
All right, so on the seventh and the fourteenth, the public affairs led on the fifteenth, we had the Joint Powers Board meeting here, and gave some updates on the generator project and some security things with card readers and that. On the sixteenth, economic economic development board meeting, I attended via Zoom. And then yesterday, the Brookings Republicans Noon Luncheon, I attended that and listened to Dan give an update on the state's.
Okay, thank you. On the seventh season, getting employees hired and tree orders are coming in, and they're they're getting ready for the year. On the eighth, went to a pandemic planning committee at, meeting at the hospital. We went through incident command training there for an hour. It was interesting, and we had a good meal. On the sixteenth, I had a chance, a little extra time. I went and toured the Brookings United Way new facility. Real nice facility, and I'm happy to see they offer a lot of different programs for a lot of different people, and they can always use volunteers there also. On the nineteenth, last night, attended Conservation District, had their annual Christmas party and attended that and had some good walleye. Best part of the whole deal, so. With that, that's all I have. Item number thirteen, executive session one twenty-five dash two, parentheses one, personnel, I have motion to enter into executive session.
So moved, second.
Have motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried.